Mr. Dawson, do you have a copy of the investigator's report?
I do.
Do you have any comments on the things that's been...
Sure, yeah, I mean, I'd like to, obviously, this is a fairly complicated issue, it seems, so I'd like to comment on just three of the issues that I think are pertinent here. One is issue number one, HRS 281-31D, holding of multiple licenses. My understanding of the way multiple license holding is structured is that, you know, one business cannot hold a direct license into another. We have, it's hard to, how to describe it best, is almost like we have non-conjoined siblings underneath the holding company. My manufacturing license is owned by our holding company, and it's completely independent of our restaurant and also our farm. There's also a farm within this organization. And there's no interest between those organizations, as I said, they're sort of like non-conjoined So a single manufacturing license is not being held into what would ultimately be this food and products and restaurant retail license. They'd be completely separate. And that's my understanding of that specifically. Issue number two, HRS 281-42, special restrictions talks more generally to TTB regulations and federal law. I mean, I kept some notes, I apologize, I'm gonna try to read off them just so I can keep everything straight, but, you know, the TTB rules, we're a manufacturer, and obviously to get a manufacturing license from the federal government's complicated. I joke sometimes that only nuclear power, well, maybe now the Paco Lolo guys have more, you know, regulation and administrative paperwork than we do. But we really have to follow, jump through a lot of hoops, and we had to just to get that license. And, you know, we have a TTB audit regulator that we work with regularly, who we talk to about any changes or anything we're trying to accomplish. And we talked to them specifically about these rules, you know, and it talks about tight house rules as well as just, you know, just the way licenses are shared between companies. And they're very specific with me, saying that this only deals with foreign ownership and interstate commerce. In other words, a large foreign company like Bacardi couldn't just buy 10% interest in every restaurant in California and compel them then to buy their rum. Or the same would be true, I suppose, of a large manufacturer like Anheuser-Busch, maybe, in the United States. But we're not an interstate business, we're 100% Hawaii business, we're Hawaii-owned, Hawaii, we're Hawaii LLC. We have no interest in outside the state, we only have interest within the state. And all of the work we do between our businesses is intrastate. And many states, and this is, so ultimately, the decision that's before the commission is whether or not federal TTB regulations related to interstate and foreign commerce should be applied to intrastate commerce. And I would argue, and I think that it's a fair argument, that they should not, and the state should make its own decisions about how it wants to regulate intrastate commerce. And it's true in many states, in Colorado and California, and, I mean, and many others that allow multiple licenses to be held, and there's no issue with the tight house because everything's wholly owned by the same company here. Even though we're non-conjoined, as I said, we're still, the ownership from the top down is the same. There's no conflict of interest. We can't essentially compel ourselves to buy something because we're all one entity, and it's all a Hawaii entity. I hope that makes sense, I know this stuff can get complicated. The very last would be HRS 281-42, related to DPP and zoning. I really don't understand, honestly, there's an issue here about 500 square foot space determination. But my recollection is when we came in here all those years ago and got our tasting room before you, and came up with the rules for what that would mean. We were the first manufacturer to have a tasting room on the Amanuahu. And those rules were determined right here with you guys. I mean, we actually hammered it out and came up with what would be the rules for a tasting room, and we'd sort of settled on this 500 square feet of our distillery, right? Because the distillery is obviously a large, you don't want people in the distillery itself drinking rum off the distillery, like, we have a separate 500 square foot space where we do retail sales and tastings. And I went through, and I just went through and combed through every part of the variance, trying to find where this issue comes up, and I can't find it. But I guess even if it were a part of the variance, I'm not asking for another manufacturing license, I'm asking for a retail license, and any space allotment that would be asked for would be a new ask, wouldn't be the old one. And I don't see where there would be any limitation from that. And we were granted our variance clearance on December, I think, 14th last year, and given, given, a clearance to sell alcohol in our location. So I guess I'm a little bit confused about any issues that might be related to the variance.
You mentioned retail licenses, is this a restaurant license?
Well, it's tied to it, it's an excellent question, thank you. What would happen is we submitted for a restaurant license, and we want to be able to, we have a restaurant, the distillery, where we'd like to be able to, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, be able to serve tropical cocktails and things like that, Hawaiian-made products to our guests. The process was taking a very, very long time, and we're going into the busy season, so we decided, all right, this is gonna take a really long time, since the entire submission for the restaurant's already in, can we submit for some special licenses? And use the restaurant that had already been submitted, all the paperwork was already done, and say, hey, could you use this? And the investigator said, sure, so we submitted it. Unfortunately, even that process took long, and we already missed our first four before we had our hearing. And the very first days we have used would be starting tomorrow, and honestly, we're ill-prepared, because we weren't sure when we'd get our hearings, we're not staffed for it at this point, so we may actually want to push it back and not use those first, that first weekend. But, yeah, so that's why they're tied together. This is the first part of, hopefully, what will be our final submission for the actual retail license for the restaurant. Hope that makes sense.
So you have a manufacturer's license, existing manufacturer's license, and you want to have a dispenser, basically a restaurant license, on the same premises?
On the same, on the same TMK, but it's a separate lease, it's a completely separate entity.
Is it a separate building?
No, no, they're in the same building, but they don't share any direct overlapping space.
Is the restaurant open for business already?
Yeah, yeah, we've been...
How long?
Pardon?
When did it open?
Oh, gosh.
February.
Yeah, it was February.
Have you had an opportunity to review the investigator's report?
I have, yeah, yeah.
On the opinion, can you, on the last page, on page 16 of the investigator's report?
Yeah, he says that we don't meet statutory requirements, is that your question, whether I agree with him?
Well, there's some other things in there, too, read the entire paragraph, and I think I'd like to have Mr. Takata, please come forward to the table.
I'm sorry, you want me to read this?
I want you to familiarize yourself with it.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I mean, we're bound by the statute.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Would you like to respond to his opinion?
I very respectfully disagree. I think that the, I think this is, I think the tight house rules and the license rules are not, I don't think the organizational structure that we're suggesting be allowed is an organizational structure that's prohibited under these rules.
Okay, so Yasu, he doesn't have to be sworn in, does he?
I don't believe so, no.
Introduce yourself for the record and your position with the commission.
Yes, sir, Takata, investigator, currently assigned to the licensing section.
Okay, so you wrote the opinion here?
Yes.
Right, so can you enlighten the commission on how you base that?
Basically, I see it as an indirect interest of a holder of a manufacturer's license in a restaurant license. That's, I just see it as an indirect interest because of the connection of the organizational structure.
Would you like to ask?
Yeah, sure, I mean, I respectfully, again, I understand, I respectfully disagree, they're non-conjoined, the entities are not the same, and they don't have an interest in one another. The manufacturer's license, while they're owned by a holding company, the holding company wholly owns these non-conjoined entities underneath, but they do not, no one, the restaurant license does not own an interest, would not own an interest in the distillery and manufacturer, they're completely separate. And I think this is probably new space, there aren't that many manufacturers, this may be a new question that's being asked, and I, very respectfully, I'm hoping we can find a sensible conclusion.
Did I hear you correctly, did you state that both entities are occupying the same property?
They're on the same, yes, they are, they're on the same, they're on the same TMK.
And they are joining?
They are, they share a wall.
They share a wall.
Yeah, the restaurant's really an outdoor space, but the preparation area is covered.
Okay.
Mr. Dawson, you and Mr. Brand have interest in all three LLCs, Manulele Holding LLC, which is acting as the holding entity, and then also in the manufacturer's license as well as in this current application, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so you folks combined have a 60.51% interest in Manulele Holdings LLC?
I think it's a little bit more, because Mr. Brand has cost pay and B shares, it might be more than 64%.
Okay, so you folks do all have interest in all three of these entities, though?
Correct, through the holding company, we own shares in the holding company, as do all the investors. So the same investor group owns the, owns all the businesses equally.
Any further questions or type of action?
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor. I vote, you know, in executive session. Okay, thank you, we are now back on the official record, Mr. Takata, you're excused. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Yes, Chair. My motion is to deny special license applications number 20-20527-3 to 20-20527-7.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, Agenda Item Number One, Application Number 20-20527-3 through 20-20527-7 are denied. Thank you very much, Chair. Calling Agenda Item Number Two, Application Number 20-20806 from Ford, Oahu New, DBA Ford Hawaii New.
Aloha, Commissioners, June Nae Olle representing Ford Oahu New, J U N E N A E O L E.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? I have one fast question.
Sure.
So are your students doing the paving at the Waikeli Shopping Center?
Not the ones that I work with.
Okay, all right, very interesting.
I work with more the athletic department, and then seniors who are graduating, going into labor and community health.
Good job, very nice.
West Oahu.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioners?
Ms. Olle, this is 21 and over event only?
Yes, we had issues with doing all age in April, and so we decided not to do any more all-age events and all ages, speaking 21 and over.
Okay, and I may not have seen it, and I apologize, but can you walk us through your security plan?
Security, we have 25 security guards with Rain Security Company, we have 10 HPD officers on site, on all of them.
Thank you.
And Mr. Ho will give the permit?
Yes.
And I'm just assuming is the amount going to the nonprofit, 60-40?
60, correct.
60-40?
Yes. In the past, it was 70-30, but the expenses kind of couldn't justify, so it went down to 60-40, yes.
Well, let me just say one thing, 60-40 is a lot better than $2,000 to the nonprofit.
True, true, true.
We have had some applications like that.
Motion to approve application number 20-20806.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, Agenda Item Number Two, Application Number 20-20808 is approved.
Thank you so much. Happy Halloween.
Calling Agenda Item Number Three, preliminary hearing, transfer application number 20-20176 from MAS Trading Inc.
Hi, I came here for MAS Trading Inc., my name is Okam Yu.
Thank you, please have a seat. Commissioner?
Okay, motion to approve transfer application number 20-20176.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, Agenda Item Number Three, transfer application number 20-20176 is approved.
Thank you so much.
Calling Agenda Item Number Four.
Yes, Chair, due to a conflict, I'm gonna have to accuse from the...
Agenda item? Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Chair, I'm gonna also accuse to, due to a potential conflict of interest. Thank you, Commissioner Lee, show, please move that for the record. Calling Agenda Item Number Four, Application Number 19-16821 from Sakura Japanese Restaurant Four, Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi, on behalf of the applicant, to my right is Shi Feng Zhang Z H A N G. He's the principal, officer and director of Sakura Japanese Restaurant Four. We have no additions or corrections to the investigator's report. This is Mr. Zhang's fourth restaurant, he has one in Mililani, and he has two on the Big Island, one in Kailea Kona, and one in Hilo. However, he's now based on Oahu, so if the Commissioners have any concerns, they can't watch the restaurants, his primary base now is on Oahu.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Must be doing well. Mililani is doing well, yeah? So good. Motion to approve application number 19-16821.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, Agenda Item Number Four, Application Number 19-16821 is approved.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Could we have Commissioner Miashiro and Commissioner Lee back, please? Calling Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number 20-20661 from DSM Food and Spirits LLC, DBA Study Hall Sports Hall, General. Mr. Morrison.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, my name is Jed Roa, J E D R O A. To my right is President Douglas Morrison.
T O U G M O R I S O N.
Thank you. Mr. I, has anybody signed up to testify?
These are prelims, yes.
Prelims, yes, I understand.
I don't believe anyone has registered to testify.
Very good. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number 20-20661.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number 20-20661 is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
How easy when we follow the rules. Calling Agenda Item Number Six, Request Number 20-20457 from Olo Investments LLC. Good afternoon, sir.
Hi, Trevor Ben, B E N N.
Thank you very much, Commissioner?
This is a request to increase the license premises by over 1,300 square feet.
Yeah, we took over the upstairs, our home building.
Motion to approve, Request Number 20-20457.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, Agenda Item Number Six, Request Number 20-20457 is approved.
Thank you, good luck.
Calling Agenda Item Number Seven, Request Number 20-20786 from Aloha Beer Company, DBA Aloha Beer Company LP, Mr. Shunsato.
Good afternoon, Chair, and Commissioners, Ross Shunsato, authorized agent for Aloha Beer Company LP. To my right is Dave Campbell, C A M P B E L L. He's the operations manager and also an authorized agent for Aloha Beer Company LP. We have no corrections to the investigator's report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
What is the current use of the area that you're trying to expand or extend?
This is currently dining.
Dining?
Yeah.
Not parking stalls or anything like that, right?
No, well, it's converted parking stalls, where we, when we started, it was parking in the morning, and then in the afternoon, we convert to dining. But we worked out an agreement with HCD where we rented additional stalls upstairs of the building, because it was becoming a lot of work to convert the space day in, day out.
So this is an open space, there's no roof or walls?
There's, it's only open on the front, it's, if you can imagine, it's a carport area, so it's open in the front.
We're very familiar with the location, it's very close by here.
Yeah.
So it's that, like, garage area on the side?
Yes, yes.
Are there any plans to enclose it?
No.
You are still waiting for HCD approvals? According to the investigator's report?
Oh, no, no, I, we've been approved, approved on that one, and I got that, and I'll be giving it to Mr. Shunsato tomorrow.
Zoning clearance has been updated.
That's updated?
Yeah, motion to approve, Request Number 20-20786.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, Agenda Item Number Seven, Request Number 20-20786 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Eight, Request Number 20-20782 from I Hami Chi Pak LLC, I'm sorry, Ms. Wu, how bad did I do?
Pretty bad, I was only three syllables.
It's only three syllables.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Min Jong Wong, behalf of Hawaii Hamji Park Insurance.
Ms. Wu, what's going on with this location? Are they occupying it?
Yes, they're still in business, just they, they've been trying to change the ownership for over about a year, and we, because they have a stock transfer application, a pre押 押, and found that's not the right type of the application. And then the last year, this year, January 18th, was the time that was transferred already, and they are hoping to change the ownership one more time, waiting for the pre押, which is very hard for them financially, because there's a lot of cost to work with.
Okay, motion to approve, Request Number 20-20782.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, Agenda Item Number Eight, Request Number 20-20782 is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Wu, thank you so much.
Calling Agenda Item Number Nine, Request Number 20-20783 from Robin Melchor Esquire.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chairs and Commissioners, Robin Melchor, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner?
Yeah, motion to approve, Request Number 20-20783.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, Agenda Item Number Nine, Request Number 20-20783 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number 10, it's a review of Application 16-4202 for Regal Simas, Inc.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, James Dipasquale, D I P A S Q U A L E, on behalf of Regal Simas.
Is this, no action needed, Ms. I?
No, what, he needs to state how much more time you are requesting to affect the license.
My client actually is requesting that the license be canceled at this time.
Do we need a separate request for that, Ms. I?
Yeah, I believe, out of an abundance of caution, the request to cancel the license...
So it hasn't been effectuated yet, right?
Right. Actually, license cancellation can be handled administratively, so with respect to this, I guess the commission would not be taking action since you're not requesting additional time within which to affect the license.
Okay.
Or perhaps, I'm sorry, I just was not expecting this particular outcome.
Not, not, so you can, you can speak with administration, and they will direct you.
Okay.
I'm just trying to see what type of action the commission should be, I don't know, Council, would you like to make a recommendation?
Yeah, so, is the original request to ask for more time?
It's a review.
It was a review.
Yep.
Okay, so, you're, are you withdrawing that request?
Um, yes.
Okay, so let's make a formal motion to withdraw the request.
Okay.
This is a review, not a request.
Yeah, this is a review.
By rule, if, once a license has been approved by the commission, if it's not affected within six months, it automatically comes back before the commission for review, to see if, to, I guess, determine the reason why the license has not been affected. So this has been going through a series of these sort of procedures, so it is not a request by the licensee to appear before the commission to request for it, it is automatically scheduled.
Okay.
More action?
Yeah, so I think, like, no action would be...
What is the recommendation?
No action.
No action taken?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on to Agenda Item Number 11. This is another review, correct?
This is a request to remove all the conditions that was placed on the license, and a review of their six-month probationary period.
Okay, Mr. Go, please introduce yourself and your client.
I'm sorry, hold on one second, wait a minute, we don't have any documentation for...
I believe in this instance, the commission is that when the request was granted, they were placed on a six-month probation with respect to the lifting of restrictions on the license, so this is another automatic scheduling. Typically, you do ask enforcement for information with respect to the months preceding, to see if there have been any issues with the license.
We will do that.
We will do that.
Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Neil Gotas, appearing on behalf of M Trade Promotion LLC. To my right is Huck Kim, Manager. For the record, to our knowledge, there has been no... To my right is Huck Kim, manager. For the record, to our knowledge, there has been no incidents or complaints during this probationary period.
Thank you very much. Can we hear from enforcement, please?
Catherine Fantine, supervising investigator for enforcement. There was no complaints or N O V warnings issued during the six months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gota, um, how often on average has?
Excuse me.
Sorry, go ahead.
There was one complaint, but it wasn't related to this. It was, it was a complaint for employee drinking and sales service to minors.
Okay. And that complaint came from the public?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What, um, there was no violation issue?
No violation issue.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gota, um, can, um, how, about how often are you folks having live entertainment on the premises?
Actually, not very often, um, without the ability to use any type of amplification. Uh, it's been difficult to figure out a, a format to use the live music.
So if we lifted the restriction, how often would you be having?
Maybe once a week. Maybe once, once a week.
Okay, thank you.
So you folks are, are not doing live music at the moment?
Not.
It's kind of hard with singing a cappella.
If I recall correctly, I think acoustical guitar was an option?
Yeah.
Has that been done?
Uh, the restriction, uh, did not allow us to use any type of amplification or microphone. And so we were kind of, we're considering coming back to the commission for modifications of these restrictions to potentially use the existing speaker system that we play recorded music on at no higher decibel or volume to allow that live music. My understanding is that needs to be a potentially separate request.
Yes, correct. And you haven't had complaints from the public regarding the existing use of the speakers?
Recorded music, no.
Thank you. Natural voices, right?
I've got to go to the Fosseto competition. They don't have microphones there. Yeah, no action required.
No action is required?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Okay, can I have a, uh, type of action for agenda items number twelve through seventeen?
Miss Chair, uh, motion for the adoption.
Excuse me, uh, eighteen.
Motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items twelve through eighteen inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, the adoption of decision in order, agenda items number twelve through eighteen are approved. Ms. Choi?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the commission, Ms. He Ri, Deputy Corporation Counsel Monica Tri on the record for agenda items nineteen through thirty-two.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number nineteen, strip state.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Please introduce yourself and spell your name.
Uh, my name is James Gonzalez, J A M B E S G O N Z A L E S. I'm the Assistant General Manager, strip state.
Thank you. Vice Chair, May?
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, I'm just going to read the charge. Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before July thirty first, twenty nineteen. A report is directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, twenty eighteen and ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five four C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu. Mr. Gonzalez, how would you like to plead?
No contest, please.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi? Uh, this is a first time violation. The gross liquor sales report was filed, but it was filed twenty days late. My recommended fine is three hundred dollars. Mr. Gonzalez, any comment?
Um, yes, uh, it, uh, it wasn't any attempt to withhold information or anything like that. It was a clerical error with a corporate entity and ignorance on the part of myself. Um, it's the last time it will happen. We're all very aware of, of the procedure going forward.
And, uh, you, you are able to, um, file online now, so that may help you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred dollars, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, uh, the recommended fine of three hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty, Pacific Spirits, Inc. Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Raul Corco, I'm the president of Pacific Spirits.
Uh, Mr. Corvello, I'm going to just read the charge. Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before July thirty first, twenty nineteen. A report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, twenty eighteen and ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five four C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu. Mr. Corvello, how would you like to plead?
Well, it's a bit of a quandary simply because I.
Just plead for right now, then you can comment. Um, if you want to challenge the charge, then we have to schedule you for the end of the agenda so that we can go through a contested hearing. Sir, sir, if you would like to comment, you need to put in a plea first. I will allow you to comment after you've entered a plea.
In the interest of settling this and just getting it over with, I, I, I go no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nineteen, the no contest plea is, uh, excuse me, uh, agenda item number twenty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi? This is a, a first time violation. The gross liquor sales report was filed, but it was filed sixty-four days late. My recommended fine is a thousand dollars. Mr. Corvello, go ahead. What would you like to say?
Basically, what it was, was I submitted this, this, I had submitted a copy at the time when I picked up my licenses as well because, you know, I was paying for my license at that time. And I had a lot of stuff going on at that time, but as clear as I, close to my recollection is that I brought it in with me at that time because I was picking up the license and I just, it was at, you know, the end of the month. It was a time to turn it in. So I was on, you know, and, uh, I was simply under the impression that it was turned in.
Okay. Ms. Choi? Our records show that we received it over the counter on October third, twenty nineteen. We didn't receive a, a copy before that.
I come back, but I, I came back with it to bring it back, but when I, when I came down to pick up my Pacific Spirits, my license and, uh, you know, at that time, I, I, I was sure that I submitted it. I mean, I, I, that, that, that's what it was. And when we got the notice that we had to come in and submit, that's when I, you know, I did it again. But I was, I was sure that I turned it in at the time when I came to pay all my, you know, pay for all my licenses and stuff right at that time.
And when you, when, I'm sorry, Ms. Choi, when the licensee comes to turn in their gross liquor sales report, do, is it date and timestamped? Yes, it, it usually is. On the actual, uh, declaration of gross sales, it has the, the time and the date stamped right on as they receive it. And Mr. Corvello, you've been in business in Kailua for a long time, correct?
Quite a while. Yeah, that's what I mean. It just could be an oversight, but, you know, I was, I'm sure under the impression that at that time, you know, I made sure that I brought it home. I mean, that's as near as I can recall. And then when we had the notice, of course, we complied with it and I called my, you know, CPA, my, my bookkeeper and I said, hey, you know, oh no, boss, you took it in when you, and that's, that's as near as I can recall.
Okay, and this is a first time violation to your recollection? Yeah, it's a first time, but can I just add one comment? Sure. I understand that there's this, um, discussion about, uh, renewals and such, but the renewals of the license are picked up before July first. And in this case, when you file the gross liquor sales report, you're filing it between July first and July thirty first. So, I mean, with all due respect, there are many reminders. I mean.
I picked it up on the day. I, I know I picked it up on the day, the first day, because I was out of town and I made myself, I came in.
Okay, seeing as this is a first time violation, Mr. Corvello, um, my motion is, um, to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. However, we'll suspend that one thousand dollars for a period of one year, provided a similar violation doesn't occur in that one year.
Very much.
If it does occur in that one year, that one thousand dollars is collectible in addition to any other fines levied by the commission.
Fair enough.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty, the recommended fine of a thousand dollars is approved. However, that thousand dollars will be suspended for a one year period. Why there's no similar violations happening within the, uh, one year period.
Thank you, Mr. Corvello.
Calling agenda item number twenty-one, Kapole Karaoke.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Michael Sweetman, S W E E T M A N for Kapole Karaoke. The licensee regrets that he's not able to be here this afternoon.
Mr. Sweetman, do you waive reading of the charge?
I do waive reading of the charge, yes.
How would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi? This is a first time violation. The gross liquor sales report was filed seventy-one days late. My recommended fine is a thousand dollars. Mr. Sweetman?
Thank you. Yes, it, uh, was an oversight on the part of the licensee. Completely understand when the, when the, when the reports are due. And, uh, because it is a first time violation and the nature of the offense, just ask the commission for, um, some leniency and possibly a reduced fine, maybe to a person that had it been filed sooner.
Seventy-one days late is quite a long time and we do send out several reminders. Um, is there any additional exchange, circumstances of why it wasn't turned in?
Yes, ma'am, and it's not an excuse at all, um, but I think as the commission knows, the owner, uh, was recently called to, to active duty. Military orders beginning in May and he has not been able to be as involved in the administrative operations as, uh, as he had been in the past. And that's why it escaped his attention for so long.
Is he currently in active duty right now?
Yes, he is. He's here in Hawaii. He's located here and he has oversight, but he's been called to, uh, full-time active duty orders.
Motion to approve, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, ma'am, I just want to say, before the owner went into, uh, was called for active duty, he was aware that he had to turn in these reports and there were communications between him and the auditor and, and it still wasn't done. There were communications prior to the due date? Um, prior to him going away on active duty and to the due date. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Ma'am.
So after the due date, we made the effort to contact all the licensee to, to remind them that they are late and they have to file. We have several communication with the owner and we even tried to help since we found out that he uses a POS system. We sent the one of the auditors to go to the premise, get the report and then tried to help him by filling out the, uh, G L S on the spot. And then, but still failed to submit.
Mr. Sweetman, when did he receive orders for active duty?
Uh, it was, I don't know the exact date, ma'am, it was, uh, the month of May, uh, this year.
Okay, and, uh, he is aware that, how long have you folks been in business, Kapole Karaoke?
Uh, a little over two years. And so he is, he is aware, ma'am, and he has paid that in the past and he's aware of the due date and, um, certainly are not making, um, um, excuses or anything like that. That's just that, that was the, the reason that it escaped his attention for, for so long and that he completely appreciates the commission's efforts to help him comply. And, uh, like I said, so there, there is no, no actual excuse. He should have complied. He just was not able to, um, or he just didn't in the, in the period of time that was required.
What efforts have been made, um, to make sure this doesn't happen again in this upcoming year?
Well, at, at that particular establishment, he has, um, been hiring better, uh, more full-time management so that he can be less involved in the day-to-day and still have trust that there are managers there.
This isn't a day-to-day issue. This is a licensee compliance issue, uh, an annual report that needs to be filed with the commission. So how can we be assured that this problem isn't going to continue?
Uh, yes, ma'am, it's just a matter of clerical calendaring, putting, putting deadlines and due dates on calendars and things like that. And that's what, um, sort of fell by the wayside since he hasn't been as involved, but, um, he is trying to rectify that with, with additional personnel.
All right. Anything further, Ms. Choi? No, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. However, we will suspend five hundred, collection of five hundred of that amount for a period of one year, provided no similar violation occurs. If a similar violation occurs within that one year period, the additional five hundred dollars will be collectible in addition to any other fines levied by the commission.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-one, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. However, five hundred dollars of that will be suspended for a period of one year, provided no similar violation occurs.
Thank you, Miss Sweetman.
Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Tropics Ale House Waikiki.
Good afternoon, District Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi, representing the licensee. To my right is Puyam Kashani.
Chair, I'm going to have your keys. Does that potential conference, Misses?
Thank you.
We're going to waive reading of the charge and a plea, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi? Uh, this is a first time violation for the, uh, late filing of the gross liquor sales report. It was filed sixty-two days late. My recommended fine is a thousand dollars. Mr. Kiuchi?
I'm going to let Mr. Kashani explain it to the commission.
All right. Mr. Kashani, go ahead.
Uh, it was, uh, administrative oversight on our part as far as the filing goes. Um, we, we also tip, we knew about the filing. Uh, the, it was, we became aware mid-August that it was actually late, but we were also advised that even if we file, the payment is due at the same time. If you don't make the payment, it's still going to be late at the time. And typically during, unfortunately, typically during the late summer times of our, of our business, we go through like a seasonal recession and it's kind of, we go through a little bit of financial hardship during that time. And if we didn't file because we weren't to be able to pay at the time either, unfortunately. So although we know, could, we could have just filed it or if, uh, we just held off until we were able to, um, begin the situation where we can pay as well.
Kiuchi, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Tropic Ale House Waikiki has financial problem?
We, so to explain it, um, when the business started, uh, they initially ran behind the eight ball on rent. So what we had to do is we had to make an arrangement with the landlord. So that arrangement with the landlord required him to make additional payments. To his credit, he actually paid that off in, at the end of August and that's part of the reason, the cash flow. But to anticipate the next question, why is it not going to happen again? As of October one, Mr. Kashani has a new accounting person handling all of his restaurants. He and I have gone through this several times and, um, I've talked to at least the insurance guy several times. I think that's going to mitigate the situation. I will say that probably the reason in paying the gross liquor sales, because I knew, know he paid the landlord and that got paid off at the end of August. But obviously, that's not an excuse, so.
Well, you folks have been in business and, and licensed premises. You mentioned all of the businesses, which is how many?
He's got two other restaurants on the Big Island.
Um, and for, you've had a location here, not this is particular premises, but had a location here for several years, correct?
Uh, the location opened, I believe, a year and a half ago, at least in May of two thousand eighteen.
But prior to this location?
He had several, right. He knows, he knows better, yeah.
I don't believe that the gross liquor sales deadline has changed.
No, it has not, absolutely not.
So you folks should be able to anticipate this date much in advance, correct?
Correct.
Ms. Choi, anything further? Well, I mean, Tropics has been around. They, they should know. I mean, there's not just the, the reminders from the commission, but there's also the quarterly newsletter. There's also the, the website. You can file it online now. It's more convenient.
I, I will say one thing. We cannot make an excuse that we didn't get a reminder because the commission did call my assistant several times and we called Mr. Kashani several times, so it's not going to be an excuse. But the cash flow, I think he's exactly right, but that's not an excuse either, so.
Thank you for that representation, Mr. Kiuchi.
Oh, I, trust me, I, you know, I got the calls and forwarded the calls, so it wasn't ignored.
Great. Time to tighten up ship, guys.
Yeah.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-two, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
On behalf of Commissioner, Mayor Shaw, bye. Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Kawai Loa Tavern.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Mike Sweetman for Kawai Loa Tavern. Again, there are several charges. We'll waive reading of the charge for this one and the following, and plead no contest.
This is for agenda item twenty-three. We only have one charge on this agenda item?
Yes. He's referring to all the other agenda items.
Okay, we'll take them one at a time as agenda items.
Yep.
And you, you're entering up, you have no contest, correct?
Correct.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-three, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first-time violation for the late filing of the gross liquor sales report. It was filed seventy-one days late. My recommended fine is a thousand dollars.
Mr. Sweetman.
If I may, to save time, Chairman and Members, just incorporate my, my previous comments from the previous violation, very similar circumstances. It won't, it won't happen again.
All right. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-three, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-four, Kawai Loa Tavern.
Ms. Choi, do you waive reading of the charges for this one?
We waive reading of the charge, the charges and plead no contest. To both.
To both charges.
Yeah.
Motion to accept the no contest pleas for charges one and two. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, charges one and two, no contest pleas are entered.
Ms. Choi.
The first charge is a first-time violation for not having a registered employee. This is, my recommended fine is three hundred fifty dollars. And shall you go on to charge number two?
Yes, please.
Okay. Charge number two, this is also a first-time violation. It's a failure to dispensally straight or unmixed spirits from an original container. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars, for a total of eight hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Sweetman.
Thank you. Just as, by way of explanation, and again, and certainly not an excuse, with regard to the first charge, she, she had not gotten her card, and so there is no, there is no excuse for that. It was a miscommunication. The management thought that she had gotten her card. And with regard to the second one, they were, with charge number two, my understanding, what they were doing was trying to create like an infusion cocktail where they had, you've seen it probably in establishments before, you have pineapple and, and, and alcohol.
We refer to that as pre-mixed.
Pre-mixed, yes.
And in order to do that, the licensee has to have prior approval from the commission in order to pre-mix cocktails.
Understood. And that's, that is now known by the licensee as well, and that one also won't happen again. But beyond that, I don't have any mitigation to offer.
Have they stopped pre-mixing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And this current employee is now registered?
Yes.
Motion to approve the recommended fines of three hundred fifty dollars and five hundred dollars, for a total of eight hundred fifty dollars. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for charge number one and five hundred dollars for charge number two are approved. The total amount is eight hundred and fifty dollars. Calling agenda item number twenty-five, Kawai Loa Tavern.
The Kawai Loa Tavern will waive reading, waive reading of the charge and plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-five, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first-time violation for having unauthorized entertainment. In this case, it was beer pong. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
And I believe this is a first-time violation?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Sweetman, lots going on at Kawai Loa Tavern, huh?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And we are correcting all these issues as they, as they come up. But again, in this instance, the licensee doesn't have any extenuating or mitigating factors to offer other than, you know, they're aware that this is not an okay practice, and they are no longer engaging in playing games that they are not authorized to have in the, in the premises.
I, I would suggest having your client read through the rules and statutes so that they're not running afoul of those rules and statutes and then ending up here.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And I'll also suggest maybe some, some closed-door training with the staff to make sure that they understand all of these issues.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-five, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Sweetman. Oh, we got more.
Sorry, you have more.
Calling agenda item number six, twenty-six, Kawai Loa Tavern.
We will waive reading of the charge and plead no contest.
Both charges?
To both charges, yes, sir.
Motion to accept the no contest pleas for charges one and two. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-six, the no contest plea is accepted for charge number one and charge number two.
Ms. Choi, this is for charge number one. It's a first-time violation for having unauthorized consumption of alcohol on the deck. It's, it was in the front entrance on the deck, and my recommended fine is a thousand dollars. For charge number two, there was an unauthorized karaoke machine, and this is a second-time violation. But for adjudication purposes, I'm going to recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Sweetman.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll start with the, with charge two, if that's okay, with regard to the karaoke. My understanding from speaking with Ms. Choi is that the licensee had, the licensee is allowed to use iPads for, for karaoke. Sorry, I don't say that word exactly right, but, and in this particular instance, they were, they had additional equipment being used in order to play the karaoke. So they now understand that that also is not okay, and they've stopped that practice of sort of amplifying the system that they already have in place. Any questions with regard to charge number two?
Ms. Choi, can you, can you clarify what happened?
Yeah, so there was a authorization to use the iPad, and it was not, and it was specifically stated to the commission when they applied for the use of the iPad, that it wouldn't be used for purposes of karaoke. But on this particular violation date of December first, twenty eighteen, there was actually a karaoke machine equipment, and also somebody who was singing into a microphone and, and a photograph of someone running karaoke with the equipment, like an entertainer or somebody who was operating it. And then there was a television with words to the song being displayed, so.
So it was much more than iPad?
Yeah, it was. So that's why it's in violation of the rules.
And where was the prior violation?
The, the, well, this is technically a second violation because the first one is the beer pong one, but for adjudication purposes, I'm, I'm recommending a fine of five hundred dollars.
Okay. And has all that equipment been taken off premises, or have they since gotten approval for that type of equipment?
They have not gotten approval for it, and my understanding, it was a contractor who was brought in, and so he has taken all his equipment. He took all this equipment with him after that, and they've also stopped that practice.
Okay. And the first charge is a more serious charge. You have consumption outside of the licensed premises. Any comment for that, Mr. Sweetman?
Yes, Commissioner, if I may, on this one, just very briefly, I'd just like to offer, the commission may, may recall, I know you have several licensees in front of you all the time, but we've been in front of the commission a couple of times with regard to this outdoor area at Kapolei, I'm sorry, at Kawai Loa Tavern. And at the time of this violation, we were under a temporary license still, and the understanding, and I don't know if this understanding is correct. I've not been able to verify it, but the understanding of the licensee at the time was that they could operate, they could consume alcohol in that area. We received the violation, came to find out that they couldn't, and so we came before the commission and the, and our understanding was that, that during this temporary period, we were under the same rules as the prior licensee, and so we thought that we were allowed to be, to consume alcohol in that portion of the premises. When we found out that, that actually the red line, you know, on the, on the floor plan did not include that, we came back, asked the commission to please approve it, and we went back, and it, and it was approved. And so we are now allowed to consume alcohol in that area up until, I believe, ten p.m. that night. There were certain restrictions that the commission placed that we've been complying with. And so I, I offer all that again, not by way of excuse, because the licensee certainly should know what the licensed premises is, but just by way of mitigation for the commission to understand that, that it was somewhat reasonable for them to believe that they could consume, that they were allowed to permit consumption in that area, and that since then, they did take action to get that area licensed or, or within the permitted premises, the licensed premises, excuse me.
Ms. Choi.
Well, at the time, on December first, twenty eighteen, a man was seen drinking beer on the deck. At that, and at that time, it wasn't considered licensed. On November second, twenty eighteen, an investigative report was generated. It was clear that that was an unlicensed outdoor deck area. So they, the licensee wanted to have that included as part of their licensed premises, but it just wasn't done yet by the time the violation occurred.
When the violation occurred, they were under a temporary license?
Yes, I believe they were. I believe they were. It was, or it was a new application. So I believe they were still under their temp license.
And the temp license did not include the deck area?
Yes. It did not. It was a standalone temporary license.
Thank you.
Mr. Sweetman, just a comment. I'm hearing some of the explanation that there appears to be ignorance of the law or subjective understanding by your client. I, I'm starting to get the feeling this is more disregard of the rules and regulations, and I'm concerned about that. In addition to your closed-door training, may I suggest a hard, hard way to your client to ensure he complies with all the rules and regulations? If there's any doubt, he can check with the administration.
Absolutely, and appreciate those comments, and I absolutely will do that, yes.
I just have one question if I may.
Yes, sir.
Is your client, Mr. Paz?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the commission is a public commission, and the office is open five days a week, seven thirty to, seven forty-five to four thirty. He can call, email, or come in if he has questions as to what he's allowed to do under his license, and they can help him at any time. But the idea that he can just do whatever, you know, the asking for forgiveness rather than permission is, is really not acceptable to the commission.
Understood, Commissioners, and I appreciate those comments, and I will.
Just one last comment, because this is disturbing, all these violations. We thank him for his service, but you can't be a soldier and hold a liquor license. So he needs to get somebody responsible while he's on active duty to take over and manage his premises. Because it's obvious to, to me that the reason why he has all of these violations is because he's not present.
I think that's a hundred percent accurate.
You know?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I think that is.
Vice Chair, men.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for charge one and five hundred dollars for charge two, for a total of one thousand five hundred dollars. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-six, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for charge number one and five hundred dollars for charge number two are approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, Kawai Loa Tavern.
Thank you. We will waive reading of the charge and plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-seven, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first-time violation for failing to have an active manager on duty. My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Sweetman.
Thank you, Commissioners. I've heard and appreciate all your comments on all the previous, and I don't have anything to offer in extenuation or mitigation. Thank you.
And how, how is your client planning to make sure that there's a manager on duty? This, this concerns us, especially because of all the other things that seem to be going on there, management issues. But not having a registered manager in active charge of the licensed premises is a serious charge. So how can you assure the commission that there's going to be a manager there that's registered with the commission at all times?
I, I understand, ma'am. In this particular instance, I know that the, a very experienced bartender that, and again, this is certainly not an excuse, but there was a miscommunication, and we were of the understanding that she had come and gotten her blue management card and been to the training. She's a longtime employee and had worked in the industry for a long time, and it was just, I don't know how that communication breakdown occurred exactly.
It's very easy to verify. Have her show you the card.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Okay.
I understand that, and I wish I had better mitigation to offer you on this particular one, and I simply don't. So we accept the commission's decision on this.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-seven, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, Champs Hawaii Sports Bar and Restaurant. Commissioner Lee.
Yes, Chair. Due to a conflict, I'm going to have to recuse from agenda item twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty.
So, sorry. I thought Mr. Kiu Chi was coming, but I guess not. He, he requested continuance on Champs because he, he's still waiting to receive all of the discovery. He's still reviewing it. So he requested a two-week continuance to November, I think, fourteen. I have no objection.
Before we take action, I'll disclose a potential conflict in the interest, in light of the attorney involved in the case, but if we're going to continue it, it's non-sensative. I think I can stay here for a minute.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you, Ms. Paz. Thank you, Commissioner Nishio. And November fourteenth?
Yes, our next meeting, yeah, two weeks from now.
Yes, okay. Motion to continue agenda item twenty-eight to November fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-eight is continued to November fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, Champs.
On same request, Mr. Kiu Chi requested a continuance to November fourteen, twenty nineteen. I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-nine to November fourteen, two thousand nineteen. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-nine is continued to November fourteen. Calling agenda.
Before I move on, I'll make the same disclosure as I did for twenty-eight, for twenty-nine, and thirty in terms of a potential conflict, but I will remain here to vote on the continuance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty, Champs.
On same request, Mr. Kiu Chi requests a two-week continuance to November fourteen, twenty nineteen, and I have no objection.
Thank you, Ms. Choi. Motion to continue agenda item thirty to November fourteen, two thousand nineteen. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty is continued to November fourteen, two thousand nineteen. Can we have Commissioner Lee back, please?
May I request taking out order?
Can I have Commissioner Lee back first, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. May I request to take out a order, agenda item number thirty-two, the four thirty one?
Switch the order?
Yeah.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-two, out of order, Costco Warehouse, number one zero three eight.
Good afternoon. Chairman O'Donnell, Members of the Commission, Mutant Chu, on behalf of the licensee, Costco Wholesale. To my right is Esme Lopez. I gave the spelling to the recording secretary. She's the general manager of Costco Kapolei, and I appreciate you taking this out of order. She has young children waiting. Thank you. So, thank you. We, we waive reading of the charge and plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi.
This is a first-time violation for selling liquor to a minor. This is part of our alcohol compliance enforcement program. My recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
Was an ID asked for?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. And was it a vertical ID?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Mr. Chu.
Yes, the licensee apologizes the employee violated policy by not checking the accurate date on the identification. And the employee is no longer employed in the company.
She was, she was let go because of this incident?
Yes, and she had, or he- Yes, and she had, or he had previous disciplinary issues as well.
Okay. A place like Costco concerns us because you cannot just go in and buy one can of Bud Light. You understand what I'm saying? You have to come in and buy a large amount of alcohol, at least. I think the smallest one is a bottle of wine, correct? So we want to make sure that our minors are not being sold alcohol, especially from places where it's in large quantities.
And Costco took extra precautions. They had, they looked at their policy. They retrained on the policy. In fact, they increased the age where they have to ask ID to 40. So that means all of you will probably be asked ID here.
Well, that's nice of you.
Mr. Chu, the commission's concern is, how many other minors did you serve alcohol to without being caught?
We understand Costco is a busy location. We understand that cashiers are trying to get people out of there as quickly as possible. We understand the concern for customer service, but you need to understand that serving, selling alcohol is a privilege, not a right. And to have that privilege, you folks need to follow the rules.
Yes.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
So in the U.S. POA system, you have to enter in the date of birth?
Right.
Now or that was then?
Then, as well.
Then. So what did the?
That's why this was a violate, that's why this employee violated policy because it was.
If he had entered in the right date, it would not have been allowed to go through, correct?
So did you guys find out what date he did enter?
I'm not sure, no.
I don't think they keep the date.
You can't tell the date to the.
They cannot retain personal information on a register such as birthday.
You can obtain date of birth, so on a registry.
I don't know if they can retain it, is I think the issue.
That's not, just like how we, your other, your other.
It's like scanning. No, 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 retaining the data is the issue, I think.
No, when you insert it in.
Oh.
You see what date they punched in by looking at the tapes at the end of the shift or at the end of the day.
It doesn't show a match on the receipt, but it does show the.
We could check on it. I don't have.
We could check it.
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, maybe this will help them. On the receipt for the date of birth, it just has X's for what was keyed in. I don't know what that means for them, but.
There's a system that allows a sale after the 21, the age of 21. So whatever date they put in, we don't have a record.
Right.
Yeah, it allows the system to make the sale, but we don't keep.
Ms. Lopez, what we're getting at is that your cashiers may be putting in dummy dates that they know are going to go through so that they can just hurry up and get people through the line.
I agree with you, and we.
And as the manager, you got to check that.
Absolutely. And we retrained all our cashiers. Anyone that is behind the register has been retrained, and we explained to them, you know, we obviously, we take this very seriously. And I personally had splinter meetings with all my employees that handle the registers and explained to them what the direction is and what the protocol should be. And we will not deviate from anything else aside from following what the right thing to do is, which is following the law.
Do the retraining, do you also communicate this to Costco Wholesale Corp., so the other stores know that there was a violation, so they have the opportunity to do the retraining as well?
Yes, yes, there is. But keep in mind, it does take some time, obviously, right? There is, I have, myself, I have over 100 employees in my front end. There's other locations that have more than that. So there is opportunity to retrain. It's obviously not going to be immediate. It'll take some time, just based on the days that the employees are there and the training happens, but, yes. And we have done that.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 32, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Choi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 31, Costco Wholesale. This is the, on the news floor?
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mutant Shoe, on behalf of the licensee. To my right is Walter Jamie Havron, general manager of Costco Eva Lake. We waive reading of the charge and plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 31, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Choi. This is a first-time violation for selling liquor to a minor. This is part of our alcohol compliance enforcement program. My recommended fine is $1,000.
And Ms. Choi, was an ID asked for and presented?
Yes, it was.
Was it a vertical ID?
It was a vertical ID.
Thank you. Mr. Chu.
Yes, in this situation, again, the employee violated policy and was disciplined. Again, as we've mentioned in the last case, we have changed the policy, conducted training shortly thereafter, and continue to do training quite often, actually.
Was the, when you say discipline, what happened to this employee?
This employee, I understand, was a very, very good employee, first-time offense, does a lot of community service with Costco. So he received a suspension, was demoted. He no longer brings up sales.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I made one misstatement. The clerk did not ask for ID, instead he asked, what's your birth date? And then the student said his birth date, and then the sale was made. But he did have a vertical ID, but it wasn't, sorry.
So no ID was presented, though?
Yeah, he, the clerk only asked for the birth date, not for the ID.
And did he give his correct birth date?
Yes, he did.
Mr. Chu, you know, I think the same issue. I think some of the cashiers are entering in dummy dates that they know are going to go through.
Yes, and we've, in the training, they had, they emphasized that you have to actually look at the ID and make sure it corresponds to the person in front of you. And they talked about the vertical ID as well.
And did they talk about that the date entered needs to be the date that is on the actual ID, not just a date they know is going to pass?
Made that very clear. We take that very seriously. And again, we just did training again 30 days ago where we emphasized 40 was our mark, not 30, 40.
And I, I'm very familiar with this location. I shop there. I know how very busy it is almost all of the time. So I know, can understand that the cashiers are pressured to get people through the line quickly, but you need to emphasize to them that this is more important.
It absolutely is. Our code of ethics is to obey the law, and we're not going to make any concession. Again, with the amount of employees we have, we've met with them all, and are going to do reminders, have to with the larger group I have.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 31, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. Thank you. Check his age.
Can you see?
Calling agenda item number 33. Do we have any administrative matters?
Happy Halloween.
Trick or treat? Did we go back into the break room and get our treat? Meeting is adjourned.